Thank you. Good evening. Tonight's special meeting of the selectmen and the planning board for October 14th, 2020 is now in session. Tonight, the selectmen have posted a special meeting and the planning board has also posted a separate meeting as we have a majority of both boards present to discuss the matters of zoning. Important to the town and will mostly be involved in the upcoming special town meeting in November. So with that, we had a presentation on Route 1. If we could start there. We had a presentation last night, was it? Last week from Mr. Halke Otis and your consultant. And we've had time to further read over the documents and come up with some questions and thoughts or concerns. In the meantime, there's been some changes, I think, or proposed changes. So before we get into any specific questions, I wonder if it'd be appropriate if I asked Mr. Halke Otis to review what has transpired or changed since the last presentation that was made in the Board of Selectmen. Evening, Ernie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, we've continued to work on all of the zoning amendments. And in particular, the Route 1 bylaw amendment and the medical services overlay district amendment. And those are the two that we really want to focus with the planning board, with the selectmen tonight and get some feedback. We listened to the feedback that you provided a couple of weeks ago and we've been making changes to address those issues. There were a couple of questions that Selectman Donnie Doherty had related to the table of use regulations. And I made a couple of changes to that to address her concerns. The two main areas that we have focused on has been looking at the areas where mixed-use development would be allowed. And I want to make sure that when, before we dive into mixed-use development, that I kind of frame it in a way that everyone understands under the terms which mixed-use residential would be allowed along the Boston Province Highway District. On three areas that have been identified on the zoning map, we would allow mixed-use development. So mixed-use development comes in a couple of different forms. One form is where there is commercial development on the first floor of a building and residential up above. Another type of mixed-use development is on any given piece of property. It has a mix of residential uses and commercial uses. And so we're talking about both types of mixed-use development in this conversation. So we reduced the number of areas where mixed-use development would be allowed. And we eliminated from the five that we started with, the Sumner Street, the Moore Street, and the east side of Dean Street along an access road area and Pleasant Street. What that leaves are the following areas where we are recommending that we allow it. Starting from the north, the University Ave/Everett Street intersection, the Ponce Street at the corner of the Rotary with Route 1. Right now, that property is owned by a real estate company, Crosspoint. And there is an existing manufacturing building operated by TE Connect on that property. But around the brick building, there's substantial acreage that the developer, that the owner has indicated that they want, would like to develop. The third area is the west side of Dean Street where there are two shopping centers, where the Monkey Sports Workout World Shopping Center is. And across the street where Staples and Ocean State Job Lot are located. We would consider both of those opportunity areas for redevelopment. Not necessarily the highest and best use. The parking lot for Workout World and Monkey Sports is huge. And we'll never, never get that many cars parking there. So for those areas, we think that these are probably the better choices. And that we feel that by offering fewer areas, it will help us to get this bylaw approved by town meeting members. The other issue that we discussed was density within these mixed-use areas. How many housing units per acre could be developed? And since we did the downtown mixed-use overlay district, which allowed a maximum density of 36 units, unfortunately, we've had no takers. And we've been told, and I think almost all of us have been told in different conversations over the last year, that we didn't put enough density in there to make it financially viable for a property owner to undertake a mixed-use project. We, the planning board, met with a guy that had a piece of property that he wanted to develop. He was trying to talk the planning board into, you know, going along with a special permit to substantially increase the number of units per acre. And the planning board wasn't really comfortable with that. I think we're going to have to revisit this issue in the downtown next year. But this year, we don't want to make the same mistake again. Particularly with the Route 1 corridor being a completely different area of town and one that can accept more growth and development than the downtown at a greater density and intensity. And so this was one of the reasons why we were looking to increase the density there. I talked to two property owners that own substantial properties along Route 1. And I went to those property owners and I said, I looked for advice. And he said, you know, can you give me some idea of how many units per acre it would take to get you to do a project? One of them said, and I further explained that, you know, if you give me some wild number, like 100 units per acre, we know that we're not going to get a 2/3 vote to support that. So it has to be in a range where it's acceptable to the residents and the town meeting members to vote for it. But it's still going to be enough for a developer to undertake a project like that. And he said, Paul, you know, why don't you look at it a different way? And why don't you approach this a different way from dwelling units per acre? So he described this approach that in planning terms, we'd say that it was like a form-based code approach. And he said, so in this Boston Province Highway District, you already know what you want the setbacks to be. He said, yeah, 20 feet and 30 feet to the rear for the BUDS residential. He said, okay, so you know how much the open space requirement is going to be? And I said, yeah, it's going to be 20%. You know what the parking regulations are? Yeah, we know, you know, how many parking spaces per dwelling unit? And you're going to set the height at like 60 feet? Yep, that's the direction we're going in. So he said, that would create an envelope. So if we look at the piece of property and we subtract out the area for setbacks, we subtract out area for meeting the parking requirements and meeting the open space requirement. And we're left with that 3D dimensional model of where they could build a building. He said, after that, why don't you let them build however many units they want to if they comply with all of these other intensity and dimensional standards that you've already got in your bylaw? So I kind of scratched my head and said, that's kind of a, it's a different way of approaching it. Let me talk to Ted Dobitz, our consultant. So Ted and I discussed it and Ted said, yeah, this is a way that other towns do it. And I think he told me that he was, was working on a bylaw in Lexington where they take that particular approach. And so I said, well, why don't we try to go in that direction and see how that works? And so the bylaw amendment, the revision that we're on now, and I should say that we've probably been through three or four revisions since we last met, where we're all combing through it, trying to find any mistakes or anything that, you know, aren't really clearly written. And so we're at a point now where we think we have a bylaw amendment that we can provide to the Christina to include in the warrant before it goes to press. So we wanted to talk to the selectmen a little bit tonight about that issue, about, you know, the areas that we're considering to allow for the mixed use. And to talk about this different approach to, to the density of what could take place on those properties.
Okay. There's a lot here and there's a lot of people, might be a lot of input. So I've been trying to think of the way to keep us organized. And if people object to this, fine, but it's what I thought would work best. If we go through the proposed zoning that you've given us, section by section, everybody who has a question or comment about that section, we can get all of that out of the way before we move on. Because otherwise, we're going to be flipping back and forth all night possibly. So I also, I guess I'm a little confused myself when I try to look at the 3.0 version versus the 2.0 version we had previously. Seems to me like there's some sections that are missing, have been changed substantially. So I'd like to go through the 2.0, which is what we've been studying, looking at. And then refer to your new language in the 3.2 version. But if there's something missing, if I'm correct, if this thing's missing, explain at that time why they've been dropped, why they're no longer here. Just so we understand what all these versions mean to us. So I'll try to proceed with that. That gets us right into Section 2.0 districts. And you brought that subject up right away on the mixed-use overlay and changing the number of districts that had been previously mentioned, which was, I think, seven. And I think you said you're down to three now, as we see it on page one of 3.0. People have questions, comments, concerns that they'd like to express at this time regarding the mixed-use overlay districts.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'm having difficulty with my computer and I'm actually on the telephone now. But what I'm, what I think I'm going to do, I think I'm going to come up to the town hall. Is that okay?
Sure.
All right. I'll be here in a few minutes. Thanks. Bye.
All right. Anyone else? No question. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions for Mr. Halke Otis and the planning board. One, regarding the three MUOD sites that you selected out of the original eight or nine, may I ask why Vanderbilt's not included?
The Vanderbilt area is a light industrial park. It's in two different sections. The River Ridge section is more upscale. It has an island down the median to make it look like a parkway. And that contains more kind of office park type development, hotels and office space. The other area has, has more of an industrial type feel. And it also has the meatball factory with a smokestack that at times emits smells that in the past have generated complaints. And they've had to reinvest in trying to eliminate some of those complaints. Largely because of its industrial park feeling now, I didn't think that it was a great place to allow for housing. But having said that, you're not the first one that's asked me that question and that's been the response. But we're certainly open to, to any recommendations from the selectmen to add or subtract these areas.
Well, the reason I bring it up, Paul, is that of all the sites you've chosen, it seems to me Vanderbilt is the one that is doing two things. First, it's begging for renovation. It is old. A lot of it is, appears obsolete, functionally obsolete. There's plenty of land down there and it's sort of in this own little between Route 1 and the weapons behind where the power lines run through. You could have your own sort of community in there that involves retail and restaurants. You've got some actually interesting enterprises down there now, as it happens. Tile stores, fireplace, parking out places, medical marijuana. You know, you've got a few things going on down there already. And it might just be a matter of allowing developers to repurpose the land to bring housing into it so that you have sort of a mini neighborhood or a mini community. There might be a synergy you're not going to get, I think, of Dean Street or, or a Crosspoint or some of these places where it just seems like we're just allowing to, drop an apartment house, an apartment building because there's room for it. I think Vanderbilt, in my opinion, I'd like, actually, like, may I, Mr. Chairman, just ask perhaps Mr. Patrick Cottrell's opinion on this? I trust implicitly. Does he have an opinion on MUODs, these sites in particular? And the number we're going to have and which ones we should choose?
Thank you, Mr. Maloney, for the kind words. I agree with the three, knocking it down to the three. I initially, I'm probably one of the few people in town that don't object to apartments. If they're done correctly in the right place and they look good and they're done correctly, I don't object to them. I agree with Mr. Maloney. I think, I think Vanderbilt is, should be included in it. Initially, I wanted the whole Route 1 corridor to be included in it, to be honest with you. But knowing that this has to pass town meeting, we're looking at that as well. Trying to have some mixed use, some housing, but not overwhelm it with housing. But I agree. I think Vanderbilt would be an opportunity for housing. I've always thought that.
I might just add, Mr. Maloney and all of you, I agree with that wholeheartedly. It's a separate node by itself. It's quite an area of acreage by itself. But it also all fronts Route 1, which is what we're talking about. And as you said, it's begging for help down there for revitalization, new life, new investment. Some of the zoning would definitely do it. We ourselves wanted to try to bring that industrial area up to be more advantageous for people to work down there, to walk. We applied for a state grant. We didn't get it and we were pretty well told, one of the reasons, if not the only reason, at least one significant reason that we didn't get that grant is because no component for housing was involved. If you look around the state, actually, if you look around the country, those are the perfect kind of sites that are getting some hotels, some residential apartments, mixed in with other, you know, banks and commercial properties. And they're all upgraded. They're doing nice. I mean, I've seen one down in Tennessee. I just love to go down there and walk around. It's so beautiful. And yet it's an industrial park with some of these other uses mixed in. And I just think if we're doing it now, it has total frontage as a park along Route 1, it would be appropriate to include it personally. Mr. Jar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank Ernie and Ted, Paul, Al, Patrick, Rich, and Joe. A lot of hard work over a long period of time. So congrats for getting us this far. I know we're going to get, get through it and all be satisfied. The basic question of the three that you identified, I'm okay with the University Ave/Everett Street and the Ponce Street on the north side with the Rotary every one. I'm not good with Dean Street. You know, a few years ago, the town went to the state complaining about those traffic signals and how the traffic was being developed and used and go through. And the state basically said, no, everything's fine. We're not going to change it. Adding a higher density of use by having a lot more apartments than through commercial uses like we have on Monkey Sports, if you add another 50 or 60 apartments in that Monkey Sports parking lot because it's so big, I think that intersection is just going to be overwhelmed. I don't think that that's a good spot to include. I would rather have the third area as Vanderbilt. I agree wholeheartedly with Bill and Tom. I think that would provide a great opportunity to develop a whole new area of restaurants and residential uses and business uses if done correctly, as you folks have laid out the parameters. I think that's a perfect opportunity for redevelopment and use. My only concern is if you're going to have large apartment buildings, is the height? I'm not sure. Six stories, I like. But in general, I do like adding housing. I wish if there was a way to say that if you're having a housing component that you can't have higher than, to me, a five-story building. But I think Vanderbilt should be included and the Dean Street one should be taken off.
Okay. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, some of what Mr. Jar mentioned in terms of Dean Street, I think I had the same reservations in talking with several other selectmen. It just, it feels like there's a lot going on in that intersection and that Vanderbilt, if it's possible to include that, would be nice. Mr. Halke Otis, going back to your initial statement about density and it was interesting to hear you talk about your conversation with a developer. Just asking if you, you got close to a number in that conversation? Or was that sort of the gist of it is that you create the parameters and then a developer kind of fits what they can inside that box? And presumably, that would mean more units?
The question of the matter is that whether or not a project can be financially feasible is based on the value of the base real estate. If somebody spends a lot of money on, on the land itself and then wants to develop it, they need to get that money back. If somebody already owns it, then, you know, they don't need. And so it really is more on a case-by-case basis. I'm looking for some notes from one of the guys that I talked to. Give me a minute.
Just because I think when this is presented to town meeting, that's what they're going to fixate on is what that density number is and just, you know, being able to justify it.
Yeah, this guy, he was saying that on three acres, about 175 units would be needed for him to turn the corner and make a profit on it. And he's also recommending that we allow more height, 70 or 75 feet. The other developer that we've talked to before, he was looking for 80 feet in height. We are near the airport and all this is dependent upon whatever the FAA would approve based on the exact location. But, you know, no surprise to us, the developers are all saying they want more height. And that, that equates to another floor of a building, which then could get them into a profit margin from, from what they told us downtown is if we have another story, it gets us from break even to actually being able to make a profit.
Right. And so in talking about it here, you know, do we, do we set these parameters? And then we're in the same boat with downtown where we don't get any bites? And then we're coming back to it? Just, I know that there's no magic number, but there's probably a magic number.
And ensuring our views, I would echo those comments about Dean Street. That's my personal opinion as well on that particular intersection. Paul, when you mentioned talking to the developers and they're talking about 175 units, three acres, are they also considering affordability? Because when we get further into the package here, there's an affordability component? Or are they talking just market rate?
They didn't mention that. We know that most developers aren't thrilled about providing any affordable housing. And unfortunately, in my experience, I've seen them try to buy their way out or worm their way out of having to provide affordable housing because oftentimes they feel that that brings on the value of their development. It didn't come up in conversation.
Okay. Planning board members, any questions, comments? Mr. Jar?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up. Now I forget my thought. Oh, gosh. Matt made me think about it when he was talking about, but... Oh, I mean, Paul or even Al, the chairman of the planning board in Dedham, Mr. Bethoni, we asked him, I know Tom heard this in a meeting that we were at, in a conversation, we asked him how Dedham controls their density. They don't have any restrictions on density. How they control it is through parking because they're strict with the parking. So if, if we want, if a part of it is, okay, if we want to allow for a greater density, I am still concerned about the height, trust me. But I am willing for a larger density as long as we're strict with the parking. Because if they have to provide it, then they have to provide it. So there is, that is their limitation based on the other perimeters of the zoning setbacks, open space, et cetera. So they have to come with their own balance. So I would say if we want to do that, then I think I saw the note here about parking could be changed. And that would concern me if we're going to, if one avenue is to let them do the density that they are able to do within it without that limitation, but controlled by the number of parking spaces that they have to provide. You couldn't then allow that to be changed. Otherwise, it's going to really mess things up.
That's more or less how our formula would work out on Route 1 and the MUODs. So basically, Paul described the building envelope. The building envelope is three-dimensional, you know, factoring in the height and the setbacks. You've got a volume of space and that volume of space has to be allocated to buildings, parking, open space, and so on. So the amount that we're providing is basically twice the size of the lot. So if you have a builder's acre, you have 40,000 square feet, then you'd have 80,000 square feet of square footage to work with. So that has to be allocated to buildings, to, you know, to whatever type of units you're creating. And that could be commercial, residential, as well as parking and open space. So if you took like an acre and you said that, I'm going to do an apartment building and you figure that an apartment building takes up about 2,000 square feet and it's a small apartment with common space, we're looking at about 40 units per acre. But then you got to factor in the parking and you got to factor in open space. So that much, but if you're creative, you can do a lot of things. You could do structured parking and take up less space and get more bang for your buck. You can do underground parking and not have it even factor in at all. You can do open space on top of the buildings like a lot of these apartment buildings are doing today. It really gives the developer and the planning board an opportunity to work on an envelope and figure out what's the best combination of uses, how you build parking into that equation as well as quality open spaces. And then if it's still not enough, there's that opportunity for the planning board to increase it in exchange for community benefits. And those could be affordable housing, they could be parking, they could be open spaces, public open spaces. So I think it's a good sort of, without getting into an actual number, a discussion, a negotiation between the town and the developer in terms of what's, what's the best for that site.
Okay. Mrs. Donahue?
Turn your mic.
Unmute yourself.
Thank you. Thank you. Either Mr. Halke Otis or Mr. Brobitz, would you please be kind enough to go over the rear yard requirement and the BUDS requirement in the rear, please?
Paul, your microphone isn't on.
So where, where a property in the Boston Province Highway District, a BUDS, a residential zone, the setback is increased to 30 feet. And in that 30 feet, there's a requirement for landscaping and/or a fence to provide an adequate buffer between the commercial and the residential uses.
I'm asking about rear yard.
That, that's what I was talking about. So the rear yard setback from a building to a property line, if that property line is a district boundary between the residential zone and the Boston Province Highway Zone, the setback is 30 feet. And within that, that area, they're required to provide landscaping and a fence or a fence.
You keep using the word setback. I'm talking about a zoning rear yard from the property line.
We had this discussion at the last meeting, and we answered it the same way. And I don't think we're on the same page about what the question is. So if somebody wants to build a building in this Boston Province Highway District, it can be no closer than 30 feet to the rear property line. If that rear property line is also the district boundary line between a residential zone and that commercial district. And along that boundary, they have to do some landscaping or a fence to provide inadequate buffer between the commercial and the residential uses.
So would the buffer be in the 30 feet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excuse me a minute.
I think Helen's cell phone might be causing that echo.
Yeah, we're trying to get rid of that echo. We've got a problem, I think, because we're both up in the same rooms. We'll see if we can work that out, hopefully. All right, so I guess we're going to go on to, again, anybody for the questions on those three locations or four locations or what should happen in those issues we were just discussing? If not, we'll move on to the use regulations and the table, pretty much.
Mr. Chairman, before we jump forward, it seemed like we clearly have a consensus amongst the Board of Selectmen to eliminate the Dean Street area for mixed-use development and to include Vanderbilt. I'm curious to see where the planning board members stand on that. If there's a consensus there, then we'll have our marching orders to change the map and the bylaw that way.
Mr. Shan?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would go along with that also.
Hi, Mr. Bamber.
I would go along with that also, but I'm a little on the conservative side with Vanderbilt Park. Could we just do what's a budding Route One and stay inside that area? Or? I feel like it's a big chunk to bite off at once. It's a big area. That's my only, you know, concern.
Anyone else? Mr. Patcakowski, I think you already spoke.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with including Vanderbilt. The only, it's fine to eliminate Dean Street. The only, you know, where Staples and Ocean State Job Lot is, that corner, just, that corner is ripe for some redevelopment at some point as well. And I think that's why it was included in there. But I'm fine to go along with including Vanderbilt and eliminating Dean.
Brian Hatchett, Mr. Sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo what Mr. Patcakowski just said. I understand the Board's thoughts about Dean Street and all the congestion there. I find that southwestern corner to be ripe for development. It's been characterized as underutilized in the reports that consultant put together. And I just, I just wanted to offer my thoughts that it may be a lost opportunity to develop that parcel in a more meaningful way. But insofar as Dean Street, I can go along with whatever the Board of Selectmen prefers. I do agree that Vanderbilt should be included. I think with the brewery down there, and restaurants and all that area, that it would be ripe for inclusion in this.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
I don't have a problem with the Vanderbilt area, but I think we should consider holding off on eliminating the Dean Street. That property, you've had a number of turnovers. Staples has closed up their space. There's another 9,000 available. I'd leave it in there and give it an opportunity to a developer who may want to just pull the whole thing together and pull the retail that's currently there. And if it's the right tenants, they has some retail in it anyhow.
May I ask a question, Paul? Maybe I haven't studied the district closely enough. If it's rezoned, but a developer just wants to take advantage of what's in that district other than housing, is there anything or what is there in there that's not currently allowed?
So in talking about the Dean Street site, that is part of, going to be part of the Boston Province Highway District, and it would allow a whole variety of commercial-related uses that are allowed. Our conversation has just kind of been focusing on whether or not we should allow mixed use. And certainly, if it's in that district, it's going to set the table for redevelopment, but it just won't be with any apartments or condominiums. So I think that's fine to leave that out if that's what, there's a consensus to do and to bring in Vanderbilt, and we can make those changes to the map and the bylaw.
So the other zoning change you're making in the highway, Boston Province Highway, whatever we're calling it, that is going to offer a lot of new incentive to that site. The only thing the M U O D further adds is housing. So if we leave that out, we're just not having housing in that corner.
Yep. So I still think we'll be providing, you know, some great incentives for a developer to buy up those underutilized properties and redevelop them.
Okay. Well, certainly, the bottom line is up to the planning board and what they recommend to town meeting and town many's vote. But I think even both boards here, there's a clear majority to give you some guidance going forward. Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. When this Dean Street site was considered, were people studying it aware of the previous problem that was at the site above the PCBs?
That's across the street. Oh, well, where? Did you understand that question? Did you, could you hear it?
Yes, sir. And as a matter of fact, the chairman of the planning board raised the same question about a half an hour ago at our planning board meeting. As some of you may know, that site was an EPA superfund site. It was contaminated with PCBs. And there is currently land use restrictions as to what activities can take place on that property. From what I was told a little while ago, both the Monkey Sports Building and the Workout World were built on slabs, and that was very deliberately so as not to disturb the soil, which still may have some contamination.
And where the vehicles are parked at the corner of Dean Street there, the park lot, that is not on a paved surface. It's on a composite mix on the ground. No, it is, it's not impervious.
All right. Thank you. All right. So are we ready to go on to the use table if there's any particular questions on that? I just had one general, instead of getting into every block and every change that's suggested there. The one big change that stands out to me is a lot of elimination of the Board of Appeals to the Planning Board. Could you just explain the reason we're doing that, the philosophy behind that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I had a discussion with the general manager about that this afternoon and told him that we could get some pushback from the zoning board on that. You know, from last year, that they took issue with the fact that they were not designated as a special permit granting authority for the mixed-use overlay district downtown. Tony and I agree that the Board of Appeals by name should be charged primarily with hearing appeals for variances within the zoning bylaw. If somebody can't meet a setback requirement or something like that. The planning department, as you know, is staffed by Patrick and myself, and we work in concert with the other town boards, committees, and departments in reviewing all development applications that come before the planning board. We feel that with our professional guidance, we can, working with the planning board, produce better results, better land use decisions, better quality developments at the end of the day, because we do have the professional staff to review these projects. This is what we said last year, and this is what Tony agreed and said that we want to continue on track to focus shifting certain permits for big development projects over to the planning board and away from the Board of Appeals. And I know that's not what a lot of them want to hear, but that's the answer to your question.
Thank you. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hal Kiotis, your statement you just made, would that include special permitted uses?
Yeah, so that's, Mr. Lane, that's specifically what we're talking about, who the special permit granting authority will be. And there are certain uses that are listed in the table, uses that say BA in the zoning bylaw, Board of Appeals, that they have a special permitting grant authority. And there are other uses that the planning board is that special permit granting authority. For all major projects, and the zoning bylaw defines what a major project is. Something with over 100 parking spaces is one of the triggering thresholds. The planning board does all of the special permits for major projects in Norwood, and the planning board conducts all of the site plan reviews for projects in town. And so this is becoming a trend. And I guess it's important for everyone to understand the reasoning why we're proposing to do it this way.
Great. And that would include the mixed-use overlay district and the hospital overlay, correct?
Yes.
Great.
So we moved in that direction downtown, and we moved in that direction on the overlay district for the Flood Hill property. Makes sense to me, but it's the one thing that stands out if anyone's looking at that chart. It's complicated as it can be to concentrate on, so I want to make sure we got that out. Further questions specifically on the use tables? Anybody see anything that's jumped out while looking that over that they have questions on, Mr. Maloney?
Just one question. I don't know if this is the right place to ask it. I know it's on Article Two of the warrants, so I'll wait if you want. I just had a question about open lot storage of motor vehicles.
We're probably going to get to that in a minute.
Okay, that's fine.
Let me just see if anyone has a specific question on the table, because that's the next thing I think we're going to get to.
Very good. Thank you.
No questions on the table? Okay. So the next thing is listed here as notes to the table of use regulations. And you presented two, but on your previous version, you had a third, which was off-street storage of vehicles for sale or lease. And that's not on your 3.0 version. Could we go over what's happening there? And then go back to if anyone has a question on Note 12 and 13.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our last meeting a couple of weeks ago, we had a number of questions and concerns raised by the Board of Selectmen at the meeting. At the end of that discussion, the chairman said, if we really don't like open lot storage that much, why don't we just prohibit the use? That was originally what I thought we should do. And after hearing a number of questions and concerns with the separate bylaw, Section 7.8, that Mr. Brovitz had drafted, I discussed this with the planning board, and we made the decision to not move forward with Section 7.8. And I want to go on and explain why. The Boston Province Highway District already has a number of regulations that cover the same material that the open lot storage bylaw did. We have regulations for buffering and landscaping to make sure that uses don't impact the surrounding neighborhood. We would allow in the Boston Province Highway District a parking garage or structured parking. However, it would have to be setback a minimum of 100 feet from the road, and it would have to provide screening and buffering on all sides. So if a property owner wanted to develop a parking garage for auto storage, they could within this Boston Province Highway District under those two main conditions. And that would require a special permit for a parking garage from the planning board. So we would like to prohibit the use in all zoning districts. And currently, the only district that open lot storage is allowed in is the manufacturing zone. And within that zone, as I said when we met a couple of weeks ago, they've consumed 40 acres of land, not all in the LM, but a lot of it. And the fiscal impact analysis that Joe Collins completed showed us that the manufacturing zone land in town is quite valuable. And we know from that analysis and from our own that we don't get a lot of revenue from it for a tax base. And so we decided that we'd pull back on that, and we would just allow that use in the Boston Province Highway. And that would still allow for the use. It would focus reinvestment back into the Route One corridor. It would take car carriers off of the roads where they might be impacting our neighborhood streets and funnel that reinvestment back into the auto mile area where it should be.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on that point? Or on the additional use note of Number 12 and Number 13, Route One ground level use restrictions, and 13 is multifamily dwellings in the BPH district? Any questions there? They're as they were before, I believe. Mr. Jar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul and Al, to your board, I support the banning of the open lot storage capabilities, except for as an accessory use on Route One. I think that is the way to go. And I know we'll have probably differences on our board about the best and highest use of property, but certainly, I can't see how we're really promoting the use of parking lots as the highest and best use when we allow it. I think there are better ways to deal with it. So they can get what they want, you know, they can still win. My question is on the setback requirements on the garages. Paul or Ted, what are they, if they bump up against either residential or even if it's another commercial, is there setback rear and side from their property lines?
Ted, could you respond to that?
Yeah, so it would then fall into the Boston Province Highway standards. So that's the rear setback, or if it was a residential setback or a residential gutter, then you've got the 30 feet where you have to provide screening and other landscaping, possibly a fence, probably a fence. There's also restrictions. So that 20 or that 30-foot setback within the property of the commercial, the commercial property where the parking lot was or the parking structure was built, 20 feet. So you go back the one foot in depth and one foot in height from there. So while it could be our parking garage, you'd have to be setback further. You start at 30 feet and you keep into the interior of the lot. So you get to the point with the highest point of the parking deck, if it's a deck. So, yeah, there's a 30-foot buffer zone, and then there's height restrictions as well.
Okay. So is there a maximum height?
The maximum height theoretically is 60 feet. That's what we set for the BPH district. Like I said, on the perimeter, on any of the boundary lines, you have to go, you go over 20 feet, and then it's got to be setback, there's a setback system so that the higher the building is, the more closer to the interior the lot is. So for example, if you're building a 60-foot building, you can be 20 feet at the front setback, but you won't reach 60 feet until you're 80 feet into the lot.
Right. I guess I'm just concerned about the visual of seeing, you know, a six-story, because garages are, the floor-to-floor is no greater than 10 feet, so you are going to get six stories. So even if it's setback, that's on the other side, but visually, you're going to see 60 feet of garage.
And not take it to 80 feet.
A portion of it, at least a portion of it, right?
Well, you see, if you're building a residential property, and you own that house behind it, and you stand at the fence, the back fence there, the parking garage, if it was 60 feet high, it would be 80 feet from that fence.
Right. But I'm also, Ted, concerned about if you're driving along Route One, because there's only 100-foot setback from the front. Clearly, we're going to see 60 feet of. Clearly, we're going to see 60 feet of, of garage. That could be the high point of many a places along Route 1. I mean, the only ones that are probably going to be bigger are hotels. So I am concerned about that maximum height issue for, for garages. I mean, I just don't want to, I know you gave some good pictures at the last meeting of what these garages could look like, which I thought were great. I'm just not sure that's what I want to see.
Yeah, well, the, the other thing on the, on the front side along Route 1 is that we, we put a setback of 100 feet because we want that space to be filled with commercial businesses. So the hope that the, 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 the development along the fringe would be developed in two or three store buildings. And then that would be, and behind that would be the garages. So you really wouldn't notice the garages on the highway as much, I think. There'll be something in front of it, between the garage and the, and the right of way.
If you have the design criteria of a couple of the pictures of the garages, I certainly think that they will be a lot more tasteful than some of the stick type of garage that one of the floors that you had. So it, it's just my, my concern, because typically you could see side by side, we have the buildings to the right side, and then the garage is attached to the left. And if that's six stories high in the commercial building, it is only four stories, it's going to stick out.
Now, the reality is that, you know, you're going to, since we've limited to the BPH district now, you're really going to have to find those sweet spots within that district in order to place a garage. There's really not that many spaces, because out of the, the, the frontage, the zoning district is fairly narrow. And it's backed up against, you know, well-established neighborhoods. There just isn't the room to do that. So you, you look at the places like Vanderbilt and some of the areas on the northern end of town, maybe the southern end of town, where you have enough depth from the highway in order to put a garage in there. So, you know, you, you're working with a sort of a limited opportunity, and you're not, it's, it's just not going to happen in the areas where you're really too close to the neighborhoods. There's just not enough room to fit it in there.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hesha is saying exactly the idea that I'm trying to express, only he's doing a great job at it. So here is an idea. We are trying to protect the people, the residential people, who are near a proposed garage. So in our regular Town of Norwood zoning bylaw, we have footnotes, and we have experienced new footnotes here too. How about if we say that in the event a garage is to be constructed with the rear yard being a residential zone, then the height restriction be lower, and you could all figure out maybe 40 feet or 20 feet if it are butts of residential zone in the rear yard. You make a footnote. That way, you could still have a garage, but it wouldn't be a monstrosity 30 feet away from a house.
It would be 20 feet, 30 feet into the commercial lot. I mean, and it would have to be deeper than that to get any, any higher.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? So try to move on if I haven't lost my place.
Bill, I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Morning.
Just, just one thing. I, I do have some reservations about the, the open lots, the plans for open lot storage. Just, just a question. Are we? At, at the moment, lot vehicle storage is allowed in manufacturing districts only. Is that correct? Paul, thank you. Okay, so, and we have nine or 10 or something like that in various parts of the town. If our, if, if our, if our, what we're planning to do is to grandfather in those that are there and not allow any more, and that, in any district. I, I do want to, I do want to hear from the planning board on that specific map. Because if, if our objection is like open lot vehicle storage, we think it's ugly, and we just don't want any more, then that's one thing. To talk about the highest and best use, however, I think if, if you, you look at your manufacturing district, in particular, the specific parcels you're referring to, i- if there's a higher and better use for the property, it's likely that the owner of the property would either as a lessor or seller put it to repurpose it. You know, or simply as the owner of the property. You'd say, well, I, you know, I've got all the, I mean, it's easy enough to get rid of cars. Once the lease is up, say, I'm going to put up an office building, get your cars out of here, and go vertical in, in 30 days. So I, I, I'm not sure that we're correct. We say, you know, this, this manufacturing may overall yield us more, but it might be the type of manufacturing in specifically the, the places where the manufacturing is currently located. If on Pleasant Street, for example, you, you look at some of those parcels on Pleasant Street, I don't, I don't foresee anytime soon any really high-end manufacturing uses being built there. I just don't. And evidently, the owners of the properties don't see it either, because they're allowing it to be used for vehicle storage. So, but I, I would like to hear from the planning board on this one, because I'm not, I'm not buying in the argument that, that, that the, if we simply prohibit something, the owners will say, aha, I could put it to a better use anyway, and I'm going to build an office building or a manufacturing facility. Could I hear from Mr. Poro on this one to start?
Al, do you have any comment on that?
I happen to agree with Mr. Maloney that anyone, especially at the price of real estate today, for them to buy something or to already be in ownership of and have the need for expansion, and in order to do that, they need to take down existing, build new, and at the, the cost of construction, in addition to the cost of the land, they are going to build something that's of better use and of more value to the town for tax purposes.
I think the problem now is that the, some of these sites, the manufacturing districts, as Mr. Maloney alluded to, aren't in the the proper places to be used for that purpose. So unless they get rezoning relief, there isn't a higher and better use. Tax-wise, the manufacturing may be than a, a parking lot, but it's a parking lot because it's no good for manufacturing today. It's just not the right location, and therefore, the best use they can get out of it is a parking lot. But if it was rezoned, for example, to residential, then it would have a higher and better use, and you'd probably see some of these properties changing over. So it's a zoning issue and a location issue, I think. And at the moment, combined together, they may being used as parking storage, probably one of the higher best uses for the landowner.
Bottom, we're addressing on the Route 1 corridor.
No, he's talking about the others around town. What will happen to them, and why are we just banning them from all over town, I think is his question.
That, that's correct, Mr. Chairman. That, that is the question. We, we, right now, we allow a certain use of manufacturing for open loss of vehicle storage. We're going to ban it hereafter. So if somebody comes to you as a property owner down on Buzzard Street, for example, which is perhaps a vacant lot, comes and says, well, I've got somebody, I've, I've formed a contract, and somebody wants to store 50 cars here. We'll say, well, you can't do it because we think it's a higher and better use to build an office building. But there's no demand for office space right now. If I could build an office building and make a lot of money, I'd do it. I, I don't want to belabor the point, but look at Kerry Place. This is a perfect example. That site was built, that, that Monkey Sports was built around 2008 and went under construction. By the time they got done, the recession had hit. They couldn't lease out one square foot of that property for about two years. And then they finally got Monkey Sports in, and they've succeeded. And then the back ones now, I think Workout World or something else. But, but the front part, and I know most of you on the planning board were there at the time, Mr. Clemmie came forward and said, I'd like to have more cars there. And it, it, it was, it was never intended to be that, I don't think. I think the owner of the property wanted to put retail there, but he couldn't do it. Coming out of the recession, he evidently found out that there's just not the demand for additional retail in this section. I know it might yield more tax money for the town if it did, but there's no demand either for retail or office space, so he leased it out to vehicles. If we had prohibited it, now it would simply be a vacant lot doing nothing for the owner or for the town. And so I'm just saying, perhaps we ought to let the free market determine, at least in the manufacturing zones as we have for all these years, let the free market determine what the best uses for any particular parcel within manufacturing. Thank you.
I think the answer to that particular parcel is, again, the issue we just mentioned, to rezone it. And that is now included in the Route 1 area. It's just a question of whether it should be the M U O D and allow housing or not. But otherwise, that's in your Route 1 corridor, correct? So, so those other, so those other zoning opportunities that might allow that location to be redeveloped, we're now addressing in this, this exercise.
Well, then, in, in that case, Mr. Chairman, maybe, here's a question. The, the, let's take that particular parcel, because it's, it's a good example. What, the, the owner clearly has only been able to, I guess, lease it out to somebody who wants to store cars. And it's been there for about four years, five years, something like that. Under the new zoning district, the Boston Providence Highway District, what can he do with that parcel, or she, I don't know who owns it, that he or she cannot do now, that will encourage development at that location rather than the storage of vehicles? Perhaps Mr. Brovitz is, where was somebody?
Mr. Chairman, the, the number of uses that are allowed are, are in that table of use regulations that goes for several pages. I can't, I can't rattle off uses. Most of the uses that are allowed now are, are going to still be allowed, and there really isn't a lot of changes to the table use regulations in terms of allowing new uses, except for our discussion about allowing for, for housing in some of those districts. It, it's my feeling that the auto industry has already built the majority of the open lot storage facilities that they need in town. And with the last one, that, the last big one that came in on Moore Street, they were proposing to, to store cars on three sides of the Napontet River and, and Haas Brook, in an environmentally sensitive area. We, the remaining manufacturing land is scattered throughout town, and most of it is developed. We are concerned that places like the end of Endicott Street, that's on manufacturing, somebody coming along and saying, well, the, you know, we can get more money storing cars there than those old mill buildings. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to buy it. We're going to tear it down, and we're going to store cars. And there goes the opportunity, a lost opportunity for building a building that might employ people, that the town might be able to generate more tax revenue. The, the crux of the matter is that, that the accessory does not tax these open lot storage properties for the improvements that are on them now. And every one of those 50 acres right now are just basically parking lots for 3,000 cars. And, and if we let the free market determine what we, what they want to do with our town, I can tell you that the outcome will not be good.
Well, I, you, you, you know you're wrong in that, Mr. Halkiotis, as, as the broad state. But regardless, I, 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 I hear the point about the undesirability of some of these. I don't particularly share it, but, but I, I get, that, that I get. It's just that, you, you, Endicott Street's a good example, perhaps, or something. You probably would want to avoid it down there. I get, yeah, you're right. There's only one road in and out. You wouldn't want those flatbed trucks going down Endicott Street. That's true. It's, it's just that, you know, sometimes there, if you, if, if you want to curtail it, that's fine on those grounds. That, that I, okay, okay, I, I can see it. You know, as, but, but that's what's so high, highest and best use, I, I don't, you know. The free market got you to the point now where we are as affluent as we are, and we, we have, we have the ability to make some changes that will benefit the town to curb the market, that's fine. But, well, anyway, we're getting on to a philosophical point, Chairman.
Yeah, we're, we're getting on to maybe our subject that will be coming up, the not disowning necessarily. Mr. Petcowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, to, to, I kind of agree with Paul on this one. I mean, much like apartments, for years and years and years, as long as I've been on the board, it's my, you know, all you hear around town is, my God, we're parking more cars, we're parking more cars. And then, and then now we have the data that shows that we're really not gathering any real tax money from this. And we're at the point now where, you know, try to, try to park a car on Westwood. You know, they, they basically don't allow it. And we're getting applications from out of town dealerships that want to park open lot, because Norwood has been, basically, we've been wide open for a long time. And we park a lot of cars in, in Norwood on open lot storage. And I think that it, it, it's time to clamp down on it, restrict it a little bit. I think the town has been extremely fair to the auto mile in granting these. But we're at the point now where we've been just an open door, and we're seeing more and more out of town dealerships, you know, coming to Norwood, looking for, because we allow it, looking for these spaces and, and trying to do it. So I think restricting it down to Route 1 at this point in our, in our lifetime of open, with car storage is, is fair.
Okay. If there isn't anything else on this point, I'm going to move on to, Mr. Donahue.
Thank you. Mr. Halkiotis or Mr. Brovitz, would you be kind enough to explain to the public about, on the Dean Street site, the fact that the site was highly contaminated and is pretty much capped? The difference in the amount of care that you'd have to impose if you did put housing on the site, or could you put housing on the site?
Yeah, that question?
Yes, so I, I think that, that you may have been on your way to Town Hall during part of that discussion. We went around the room, and all of the selectmen and, and the planning board members have agreed that they would like to eliminate that Dean Street intersection on both sides from consideration for allowing the mixed use housing development.
Okay, thank you. I was worried about that. Thank you.
So that's, that's off the table, but the other one that they would like to add in is the Vanderbilt Park.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so section four, dimensional requirements, before we get into asking if there's any specific questions. When I look at my old version and the new version, you have a couple of tables here. It seems to have been placed in a different order. No significance to that. The tables themselves are the same as they were in the earlier version.
Ted, can you respond to that?
We're talking about the dimensional tables?
Yes, the first, when I, my old copy here, the 2.0, it has dimension, dimensional requirements, and it goes 4.1, 4.11, 4.11 with a table. And that's still together in that 3.0. But when you turn a couple of pages in the old one, you get to the table dimensional requirements amended by removing and replacing the BPH. In the new version, that comes first. No significant reason, right?
No. What we did do, and, and I, and I'm not, I can't remember what was in two. We're actually at 3.3 at this point. So I, I'm not sure what's in two, but what we did is we eliminated the proposed change to the manufacturing dimensional standard. We had this, we had originally proposed to reduce the, the lot size and the frontage requirements, because we're trying to give an opportunity to smaller businesses to get a start in some of these limited manufacturing districts. But it was decided to take that off the table at this point, maybe take it up at some later date. So that's the only change, significant change really that we made between the drafts is that we're sticking with the, the basic dimensions that are there today in the limited manufacturing.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Anybody? Selectmen, planning board on these sections, these tables, or these notes? There's an added note 16, and on your old version, there was a commentary. And the commentary at the end notes economic feasibility addresses Norwood's housing goals. I think technically today, we don't have any real clear stated housing goals. We did have a housing production plan. That was an affordable housing production plan. That's expired. And I think maybe we need to, that calls my attention when I read that, that maybe we need to get back to that as a separate project to doing something along those lines, whether it be specifically the affordable housing or housing goals in general. We probably do need to have a defined plan so that we all know what that means, instead of just what Paul thinks it is or I think it is. So that's just a commentary on my part. So now, yes, Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you. In the new note 16, it says, in the VHP, just, BPH district, if the rear lot line of butts of residential zone, the district in the middle- if the rear yard lot line of Hudson Residential is only just within the middle of rear yard setback, thirty feet. Um, would, the old zoning bylaw, it wouldn't just said the, the rear yard requirement. So why are we using that word setback? And do you mean setback from the residential property line?
The term setback is the distance between the, the rear building line and the lot line. So it's a setback from the building to the, um, property line.
So, under the current zoning bylaw, Mr. Herrs, how, would you describe a rear yard requirement? Is the empty space from the property line to the structure?
Yeah, that, that's, that's the definition of a setback in any direction. It's the distance between the property line and the structure.
Um, then it says further one, it says minimum about the setback, parking is not allowed in the front yard setback. Is parking allowed in the rear yard setback?
I think so. Is, is that correct, Ted?
No, I don't think it is. I think it's allowed in the side setbacks, but not the rear setback.
So I would say that you have to add parking is not allowed in the front yard or the rear yard setback. Otherwise, you're desecrating the rear yard setback.
If parking is allowed within the front setback, um, but it's, it's limited.
I still think we have to clarify that language.
We can add, um, we can add language there that specifies that parking is not allowed within that rear setback.
And I don't think you should allow it in the side yards either because otherwise, if you allow it, then that takes away the quality of the side yard. You could park cars right up to someone else's property.
Well, I think that what we're trying to do there is allow the journey to share parking. So we are allowing it in the side setback, but there's also, uh, requirements for landscaping within the parking lot so that there is some nice street, some nice, uh, landscaping and trees and that sort of thing. But we're trying to encourage people to share, share lots if they can so we reduce the overall parking footprint. But we understand the importance of keeping it away from the setback here. And there's only a limited amount of allowed in the front setback, so.
I don't think.
If that, if that in front of the front, if that in the front setback, but it's in front of the building, there's a limited amount of parking that's allowed in front of the building. But still without, still out of the front part setback.
I don't think that we should re-rely on people sharing parking because sharing, uh, uh, insinuates agreement. And we have no guarantee that one abutting parcel will agree with another abutting parcel.
Yep, that is correct. So that not everyone is going to share their parking, but where they do decide that that's a good thing for both of them, they can make that agreement. If they don't, then they have to maintain that side setback.
Would you please be kind, please be generous enough to correct this? Thank you.
Okay, so any other questions on the dimensional requirements? If not, I have a big question. Next thing I see is Section Six. The last section was Section Four. What happened to Section Five? I'm not being funny. There's no five. Is there a reason for that?
So Section Six is, is, uh, the section of the zoning bylaw that contains the parking regulations. And so this section of the Boston Providence Highway, uh, bylaw, um, jumps to the parking regulations.
Okay, so there is no five or it just, just skips over?
This, these series of amendments are being made to different parts.
Okay, it doesn't just flow. Okay.
Yeah, so it's affected by this, this amendment.
All right, so we're on to parking structures. And I'm gonna monopolize the floor for a minute before I pass it on to others. When I look at your six-point-one-seven, you need to explain this to me because the way I'm reading it is it's only allowed if it's in an economic opportunity area, which is an economic incentive area, program area, which means providing TIFs and so forth. We may not want to be providing a TIF, but we may want to let some property owner in the development of their Route One site have a parking garage. Why is it being tied to an economic development area?
Mr. Chairman, the, the text that appears in black, um, on your version is the existing zoning bylaw requirements. The texts in color are the changes, add additions or deletions from the existing bylaw. So what you see below there in color is new and what's in black is what was already adopted in the zoning bylaw.
Okay, 'cause I had that point. I made that point to someone I was speaking to, that we have that, that we amended the zoning bylaw to allow it in TIFs, uh, specifically. And it looked like you were just copying that instead of addressing Route One. But you've addressed it by adding this, this wordage in, uh, blue?
That's right.
So if, if I can, I had, I had the same question on, on mine is.
Go ahead, Mr. J.
So basically, except in the, that BPH, the new BPH overlay, uh, area, we're not allowing any other parking structures unless they're part of an economic, in an economic opportunity area.
Yes.
Okay.
There are two new sections of the zoning bylaw where we did allow for parking garages. One is in the downtown overlay district and the other is in the Forbes Hill overlay district.
But those are by those separate overlay, uh, approved areas. Okay, I, I think I read that and I got concerned about it and didn't read your board. I apologize. Any further questions in this Section Six? Signs, nothing there that raises anybody's concerns. Monument signs is a new section, a footnote. It's not a footnote. I guess it's a new section, subsection five and six, since they're new. They haven't raised any concerns or questions by anyone? Okay. Planning Board members, I guess you guys have already looked at this, but you don't have any reason to add comments. If you do, please speak up at any time. Six-point-three is buffers. We had some buffers, Mr. Herrs.
Mr. Chairman, I believe I saw Mr. Wayne had his hand up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Herrs, just a quick point, uh, on the monument signs, um, it's a five-foot setback and a five-foot height restriction, correct? And, um, could you just quickly explain the integrated monument, what, what that means?
Ted, you wanna take that?
Yeah, so basically, an integrated monument would be something with a shorter, shorter pedestal and you could have a sign on top of it. You still have to be under that five foot. You have to be setback from the highway. But we're trying to get more people to be creative with these, these attractive monument signs.
Right.
Trying to get away from the big goalboards that are right on top of the, the highway. And they could still do tall signs, but they have to use setback, so they're into the lot. And we're trying to encourage people to do more monument signs. It's more attractive. It's easier to see when you're driving and it just better sort of aesthetic for the corridor.
Great, thank you.
Screening, landscaping, screening. Okay, parking areas, plantings. So in the new version, I have, I'm looking at six-point-three, uh, six-point-four-point-three, street plantings, and it goes through F. The next thing is it jumps to nine, Section Nine. But in the old version, we had Section Seven. Is that, that's out now? It said, uh, general regulations. Oh, that was all commentary, so I guess we can forget that. So we jumped to nine, which is the mixed-use overlay, uh, discussion.
Question?
Yes, Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, before I started driving up town here, there was discussion about number of units, density of dwelling units on the site.
Yes.
And, and Mr. Herrs started to talk about this new concept of put as many as you can. Um, what worries me about that is if they went to the planning board, to the Board of Appeal for a special permit, then they could get variance, depending if the Board of Appeal granted it. They could get a variance to the height requirement. We're changing from forty feet now to sixty feet, and that's a big, big, big change for the town in all. But, um, and I'm worried about, uh, the, how, if you load up the site as much as you can, we have to comply with the building codes and the, um, health building codes that apply a certain amount of square footage per person and stuff. And I don't want people to go to the, you know, Board of Appeal and get a building permit for an eighty or ninety-foot-high building, you know? How do we, how do we work on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, anybody can approach the zoning board appeals and apply for a variance. Norwood does not allow use variances. So if somebody wants to build a gas station in the middle of a residential zone, that's the kind of variance that they, that we don't allow at all. Um, but I think we have to have some, some confidence in our Board of Appeals that they would make the right decision and, um, use discretion in the variances that they grant for things like height.
I think that's a very unusual way of developing the site. It's much, to me, it seems much more orderly to have an area requirement.
To have a, 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 a number of units per acre?
Right.
Yeah, this is, this is a different approach.
So he, he explained, I think, correctly, if I'm wrong, that part of the problem with a number per acre is getting the right number. What's, what's not too much for the residents to accept and yet enough for the developers to have it financially feasible to develop.
So if you don't wanna develop it, don't develop it. This is, we wanna try and keep Norwood as a town. We don't wanna become a city.
Any other questions, comments? I have one going down. Your new version ends with nine-point-four-point-eleven and you've got a table there and then you've got B, uh, which explains the square footage area. But on the old version, you had nine-point-four-point-one-two affordability. There's nothing in there but a comment. And the comment talks about if you have more than eight dwelling units, uh, in the new district, uh, in the MUOD on the Boston Providence Highway, you're gonna be subject to affordability requirement. And it says, including fifteen percent of ownership units, twenty percent for rental units and compliance with the requirements of the Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development requirements for counting towards a town subsidized housing inventory. Where is that if this is just a comment? Is that already in our bylaw somewhere? It is.
It's in.
I don't think we had that, uh, restriction in our, that anyone builds housing now has to have a affordability component?
Only in the MUOD. And, and that would apply to these projects as well.
And any MOUD?
Yeah, the MUOD, yep.
And where is that? Where is that further defined?
That's, that's in Section nine-point-four. It's not, it's in this amendment because we're not making any changes. So anything that goes in the new MUODs on the highway will be subject to the affordability requirement.
Okay, so I have to go back and look at that section to see what I wanna see. The, the question I had or concern I had is I don't have a problem with it personally at all, but I was concerned that this wording might be too general. For example, it says must be, uh, meet the requirements of the Mass Executive Office and so on and so forth. But that, there's choices in there. And we wanna have any say in those choices. Uh, that leaves a kind of broad, uh, wide open for a couple of different options that we may wanna control. And, um, you know, like, is it fifty percent of the AMI, is it eighty percent of the AMI? Uh, is it, what, how about the, um, period of time of the affordable deed? Uh, typically in a WIP-type program that this, uh, would be similar to, or local action units, they call them. Uh, it's like about thirty years, but what we, the people in Norwood have been talking about, uh, the forty-B developments, it's been, they, they've been in perpetuity. And maybe thirty years is fine, but I wanna bring it out because I want people to know what they're doing and what they're getting into and what the difference might be. If everyone's aware of it, that's fine. We're all educated. But I'm afraid some people may be misconstruing what's, what this allows versus what they have in their minds. And, uh, so I guess I have to, um, clarify it myself by going back and reading the existing sections. But tonight or going forward at this town meeting, we're not suggesting any changes in that. It's what it is.
We're not saying that. Hey, go ahead, Ted.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna say quickly, at the point where we, last year when we adopted the MUOD, I know that the, the goal, uh, that we were considering was making sure it accounted on the SHI on our inventory against our ten percent. So that's what it was sort of, it was, it was, it was based on. I mean, we could look at that, you know, in, in terms of other options and, you know, lowering or increasing the, uh, percent affordability, whether it's ownership or whether it's rental, whether it's thirty years or in perpetuity. Uh, but we were just trying to make sure it counted on the SHI.
So the MUOD we're talking about is the new one for downtown?
That's right.
Find that section to look and read. All right, there may be no issue at all, but I just wanna make sure I'm comfortable with it. Uh, thank you. Mr. John?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I also, just to back it up, I think, uh, Paul has already committed to looking at our whole housing issue because he brought up some issues where some may be out of, coming to the end of their, like, life cycle with regards to affordability. And he had said he was gonna come back, uh, to us with where we are, uh, what our options are and some recommendations to try to keep us above the one-point-five. And, uh, what's even better is to get it to the ten percent, which is law as opposed, as opposed to the one-point-five, which is just the regulation. So, um, I'm actually looking forward to that to see what we need to do as a town to, uh, keep us, uh, ahead of, uh, those numbers. Um, so that's in combination to what Bill described, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, I've gone through that, uh, zoning. I think anyone's comments were mostly at the beginning, but we've gone through it all to make sure. Um, do you have a minute to not, maybe not get into in-depth discussion, but at least give us an overview of the idea behind the Hospital overlay district?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We, we'd like to talk about the Medical Services overlay district. And in particular, um, a subject that we haven't all reached agreement on is the boundaries of the district. And I know, um, Helen had contacted me today and, and she's concerned, and I know you're concerned, with the boundaries that we have proposed. And so we wanna, we wanna have that discussion with the selectmen and see if we can, um, gain a consensus. Um, could, could, uh, the person running the meeting turn the meeting over to, um, Ted so that we could throw up a map showing, um, those, the boundaries that are being proposed?
Certainly. Who, who wants to do what, Paul? It's happening, okay. Take another minute, okay. There we go. Oh. There, no.
Hang on. Gonna find it.
Keep going.
I actually, there we go.
There it is, yeah. Um. I went back to the beginning, sorry. I don't know why.
So let me start by, while Ted's, um, bringing that map up, I'd like to be able to explain, um, what we were thinking when we, when we sketched out the proposed boundaries for the Medical Services overlay district. We know that the hospital complex, um, occupies. We know that the hospital complex occupies a, a, pretty much a whole block of that part of downtown. And so the, the first obvious area would be to, to circle that block and include that. The other factors that went into our recommendation to make the district beyond those boundaries had to do with whether or not there was any existing medical facilities that are part of, um, that are a part of the complex, but, but not as part of the block. So where are their existing medical offices and other medical-related facilities around the hospital? And we thought that, that since the hospital was going to incorporate, um, a whole bunch of different medical uses as an overlay district, that those should be included. And the second criteria was to look at what we thought were properties that, um, were somewhat underutilized, that had vacant land, um, that might be now used for parking cars, um, to be included in that district. Set the table for future, um, medical-related development to build out our Medical Services Overlay District. When we looked at how other communities handled this, I looked at, at the Weymouth Medical Services District surrounding Social Hospital, which is, is one of the bigger regional hospitals nearby. Um, and that goes well beyond the block where the Social Hospital District is located, across the street and down the street. Um, so we felt that, that this is, that, that the district should be bigger than the hospital. And, and that was for those reasons. To plan ahead, um, to set the table for future growth related to medical uses in the event that Stewart Hospital decides to reinvest millions and millions of dollars into, into Norwood to rebuild a, a, a hospital campus there, we're assuming that there would be other followers, other businesses that would feed off of that. And we wanted to be able to provide land area surrounding the hospital within close proximity, within walking distance, that we could help facilitate that development of, of a broader Medical Services District. That's why we proposed what we wanted to do, but I know that we have some selectmen that, that don't agree, and, and we'd like to hear from them.
Mrs. Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Healthiotis. This morning, I called Town Hall and talked to Mr. Duchesne, and I asked, who proposed the outline of the district? And Mr. Duchesne said it was Mr. Healthiotis and Mr. Provis, the consultant. So I started to think to myself, the town of Norwood, zoning changes are usually proposed by citizens of the town of Norwood. And we currently are in under very odd times. Computers and social distancing and lack of public hearings, where people can attend the public hearings and make their expressions known. Also, we know that tomorrow night, the fifteenth, October fifteenth, and October nineteenth, Planning Board will be holding hearings for the public. And some of the information that we hear tonight is going to be changed and presented tomorrow night for the first time. Now, all of us, most of us definitely want to help the hospital because we appreciate the wonderful service and care that the hospital provides. So when we're talking about a hospital overlay district, I never dreamed that it would include anything other than hospital property. When we sold the school, the junior high school at eight twenty-five Washington Street, and it became a medical building, I was at town meeting. And every worry for the townspeople was how the change of the use of the building would affect the hundreds of homes that are in the area. That part of town is on one of the best parts of the whole town. There are beautiful single-family houses, two-family houses. Now, if you look at Washington Street, look at the front, stand on Washington Street, and look at the medical building, picturing in your mind an M with a medical building in the center as an office use. Every single unit except for the first one on the left is a rented victim use or a toddler park for small children. In the future, Mr. Healthiotis said it's important for the future that the hospital have more rights. Well, if we need more rights for the hospital in the future, God willing, we'll be through with COVID virus, we'll be able to have real hearings where the public can go in person to a hearing and discuss their, their worries and their concerns about a use, uh, being imposed in their neighborhood. That is a neighborhood. That's where people live, we have to protect that. Yes, we want to protect the hospital. And I'm, I'm not crank. I looked to the new plan and the area along the railroad tracks that the hospital owns, there's vacant parking lots now. I don't mind if we include that, the hospital overlay district, because across the railroad tracks, there are industrial buildings, and there's an industrial, a parking lot for the train station. But if you go toward Washington Street, off of, of East, of East Royal Street, there are beautiful houses that have just been remodeled there. Someone is spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to make two old houses look beautiful. So we, we, we have to be careful here. We're not in a rush, except for the hospital. The only one we have to hurry for in this round, this month, is the hospital. So I think we should, and on Guile Street, just because there are a couple of hospital buildings there, what about the rest of all the buildings on Guile Street? What happens to their values if we take away their values? So I ask if you would please, please be kind enough to limit it to the, to the main big castle and the parking lots along the railroad tracks. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Healthiotis, correct me if I'm wrong. Mrs. Donahue mentioned the hearings tomorrow night. Are those on the nineteenth, not the fifteenth? So they're not tomorrow night, Ted? What are you looking at?
It says two nights.
No, I've already seen all the ads in the newspaper and everything. Are they tomorrow night, Mr. Healthiotis? Your mic, your mic's off. Your mic's off.
I'm sorry. The official Planning Board public hearing is going to be on the nineteenth. Tomorrow night, tomorrow night, we're hosting a, uh, uh, public information session for town meeting members. We, we've notified town meeting members, and, um, Ted is going to be doing a presentation explaining what these bylaw amendments are about. We'll be taking comments from town meeting members tomorrow night.
Similar to tonight, before your formal public hearing.
And I would just like to make one point responding to Mrs. Donahue's comments. This is an overlay district. Currently, the hospital's located in the general business district. All uses, whether they be residential, uh, across the street, uh, or in the general business district, would remain uses that, that are still allowed because this is an overlay district, which is add additional uses that could take place there. Any uses that lawfully exist that are allowed by the existing underlying zoning district would continue and would not be affected by these changes.
So my comments, Paul, because I'm one of the ones who've commented on the, uh, the area that you have outlined, I'm concerned about the hospital. We've lost about fourteen hundred jobs with the potential we'd be seeing, uh, abatements on the taxes that a great tax revenue and since that's gone private for the town to suddenly lose. If they decided that things were too negative and that wasn't worth reopening a hospital, like you say, it's residential, what might possibly be happening down there and how that would affect the town. So I want to gear up and make sure we convince town meeting to do everything we can to assist the hospital in coming back and re-establishing, uh, bigger and better than ever. And to that, and the concentration is on that site. When we met with representatives from the hospital, they were only concerned about that site. They basically left it up to us, the townspeople, what we thought was the right thing for, for a district for bringing to town meeting and everything. But they were only interested in their site. They weren't interested in the parking lot across the street. They weren't interested in anything but their site. And I think that's what we should concentrate on. Now, it is very parochial. As soon as we start talking about over at the parking lot, people are going to want to know what's going to happen over there. And we don't know what's going to happen over there. Let's do the hospital zone, let's get that done. If somebody's got a great idea to add to medical uses in the future, let's go to town meeting and rezone that and explain what it's all about and get their support for it. If we leave it as just wide open, people are going to be apprehensive, and we may lose the whole district. Let's concentrate on what we, our goal is here. Our goal is the hospital. Um, I did recommend that we include the gas station and the Guile Medical Building, uh, because in case there was any chance at all that somebody might claim spot zoning, that the hospital is only one owner, and that that somehow was spot zoning, the only reason I want to include any other properties is to, uh, avoid that potential. Otherwise, concentrate on the hospital. If we go over to Guile Street, those three lots, uh, again, I don't quite see including those. But if they were to be included, then I don't know why you didn't go one further down on Broadway, the corner that's now a parking lot and one, uh, three-story, uh, wood frame building, that's the old sandstone property across from the garage. Uh, that property's been sold to a gentleman who bought that property, and it connects to, with just a small connection, but it connects to the property on Guile Street that's now a parking lot being used by the hospital, leased to the hospital. So if we're looking for enhancing future development, it would seem that whole corner should be together. Seems like that site should be included if we're going over there. But again, my brothers, it's concentrated on the hospital. Come across the street, forget the other side of Guile, forget the other side, the parking area. Besides, if I, um, read the sections right, the setbacks and everything, you, you, I think you called for a hundred feet, an extra twenty-five feet, or maybe it's vice versa, if it's to a residential area. And those parking lots, uh, to residential properties on Washington and Guile, but it really pushes you back to the railroad tracks. I don't know how much you're going to develop there uh, when you go past those setbacks. But that's a side issue, and maybe, I may be wrong on what that, those numbers were, but the main point I already went on enough about, concentrate on the hospital, let's convince the people to get that done. Everything else just has to be done at another time. One, we can tell the people what's going to happen and not, what might happen there. Anyone else? Mr. Hajar?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Uh, um, I, I won't repeat what you said, but I just want to say that I, I support that concept. I, I don't like the fact that, uh, we're including those six lots on East Royal Street. Uh, I, I don't like anything across Washington Street from the, um, the hospital. We, we are right up against, uh, residential, so I think we'd have to take a lot more time in trying to develop something. I, I don't like going to those three lots on Guile, at, at the corner of Guile Street. I think we should just focus, um, like we said, on the hospital property that you've outlined sort of in the, in the center. And if you want to focus on the parking lots up against the, uh, the, the tracks as well. But, um, I, I agree, we, we want to get this done. So the less, the less questions and issues we have regarding, uh, other properties being included, I think will help us get it done. We can always come back and expand if we find it successful. And we want to create even a medical overlay, uh, oh, boundary area that would include some of these other properties. But I don't think we're prepared to do that yet. This is, um, you know, between this and Route One, it's going to be a lot of discussion. I, I just, we need to keep it simple on this one. This was being done for a specific purpose. And while I can appreciate others being put in there at some point, I don't think now's the time. I, I think we're asking for, uh, too many issues to pop up.
Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this may be a question that nobody can answer, but is, is, uh, is the hospital interested in having the opportunity to create a campus area there beyond the, the, you know, the existing footprint of where they are?
As, as has been expressed thus far, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Maloney?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To tell you the truth, I really don't have any injections to the, uh, to the boundaries as it's drawn, but I'll, i- i- if, uh, if we think we have a better chance of passage by shrinking it a little bit, that's fine by me. I wondered why this, would it make any sense to include the post office parcel? It's right there at this corner. Is it, you know, I mean, it's unlikely that the postal service will be selling that property soon, but if it came, it's contiguous.
I think you're right in mentioning that. I thought it, but never said it out loud. If we're worried about spot zoning and want to grab something, that, that's contiguous property, makes sense, and it's never going to happen because it's always going to stay in the federal government's, uh, inventory. So that might be a good idea.
I just want to confirm with Mr. Hajar, you, you, you are in favor of including the Guile Medical Building across the street?
No. Those, those three lots?
No, the, the, the medical building.
The Guile Medical Building, the old junior high.
I, I am not. I, I, I think that needs a lot of careful consideration because of, uh, all of the residential lots that are butted right against it. It's a very large piece of property that I think potentially, uh, different things could be built. But I'd be more interested in just dealing with the hospital and finding out if we are going to get other questions about, wow, we'd like to do this, we'd like to do that. We can go back before the planning board and get something done. I, I, I'm just concerned that a lot's trying to be asked zoning-wise this coming town meeting. And to me, uh, the Route One is way bigger and going to be, have a good discussion. And to throw all this at them too, when the main purpose was just to deal with the hospital, I, I do agree that at some point we should address it. Maybe there's a whole medical overlay district, but I, I honestly can't think that this is the right time to do that with, with all the other issues on the table. I think you're going to get a lot of pushback because those residents on that, uh, Guile Medical Building, about what, what the hell are we doing?
Mr. Chairman, maybe with some of the members of the planning board want to comment?
Yep. Mr. Shan? My mic's off, Mr. Shan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, first, we were looking at the larger, uh, drawing the way it is now. But I think in order to get consensus, um, I think you're right at this time to probably, uh, keep it on the, um, where the hospital is now. I think it would be a good idea to include the post office just to make it cohesive. They may never develop that, I'm sure, but, uh, you, you never know what would happen. But it, it should be added.
Anyone else? Ernie, Mr. Patsakowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think, you know, we're, we're focusing a lot on the hospital and what they, you know, the, the amount of space that they need, and they only need what they have. Uh, I think that the purpose of the larger map was to look at down the road a vision, uh, of other, uh, like-minded medical uses that eventually, uh, hopefully will come to follow the hospital. And I, I think it was the long-range vision that this map was drawn on. Uh, to Mr. Hajar's point, I, I, I do agree, and Joe, you know, I think that maybe it's a lot to throw at, at town meeting at this point. Um, my initial reaction was to even hold this off until the spring because at this point, the hospital, um, really hasn't made it clear of what their intentions are and, and, you know, there, I don't know if there's a big rush to get this done for this town meeting. But I think that it's important that we, if we bring it to town meeting, that the planning board and the selectmen are on, on the same page and on the same, you know, united front, uh, to present it to town meetings. So I would, at this point, bring it back to the hospital. I would include the post office because as, uh, Mr. Poro pointed out, uh, a lot of post offices are being sold and then, uh, leased, leasing space. And, but I also would include, uh, the Guile Medical Center. I think that that, uh, it should be part. My, my opinion is that should be part. If you want to get rid of Hoyle Street, and you want to get rid of Guiles, this house on Guile, at this point, fine. But my own personal opinion would be leave the Guile Medical Building in.
Thank you. When I went to charge about shrinking the district, it wasn't any criticism of the broader philosophy and view. That's probably very proper, just knowing our parochial view at town meeting of having to explain exactly what's coming in, if we're going to allow a use. And we don't have anything going in there at the moment, that it only complicates things. And we want to keep it simple for the hospital. The hospital hasn't shown any interest in further expanding. So I don't know that we have to worry about doing that immediately. And if they change their minds, we go back and we and we include it and we look at the broader viewpoint and do it all at that time. The other point I wanted to make was that the hospital hasn't been very clear on what their needs are, in other words, why they need it now. But they've made it very clear to us in discussions. And I might stop myself. Mr. Mazuka and I have a meeting Friday morning with representatives from the hospital tomorrow morning, representatives from the hospital to go over this point and to get them stepping up to the plate a little more to inform the public what the need is for this at this town meeting. But they have emphasized that before they can really go a whole lot further making their corporate decisions of just what they want to do, there's two big factors, finishing settling up, their financial discussion with insurance carriers, and then their own decisions as to how to proceed. And in planning how to proceed, they need to know what's going to be acceptable to the town, what they can do and can't do. They would very much like to see the town sign what it can allow, will allow, and and pass that. So they they can then do their, get their engineers or architects, all the designers moving, and know what the parameters are, what the requirements are, so that they can do that planning properly. So they're really emphasizing us getting the zoning done even before we see a particular plan.
Yeah. I I too also want to say that my, I hope people didn't interpret my comments as negative towards the plan. I I actually gave, with Ernie, looking at the bigger picture, what we may want to allow or not allow going down the road. I just think because of where we are with Route One in that whole complex zoning that's going to be talked about, that let's deal with the hospital and the hospital needs. I I think including the the post office is is great. But going across the street, once you start touching, you guys all know this, you know, residential areas, it just, people just get really emotional. I just don't think we want that at the town meeting. I think we want to confine it to the the real needs of what we're trying to accomplish with the hospital. We can always come back and have a probably a less emotional discussion about some of these other areas to see if they fit into sort of a whole medical overlay rather than trying to do all at once. I I just think we're we're trying to take too big of a chunk.
Mr. Poro. Thank you, Mr. Poro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Go along with the, but some of my board members have went along with and including the post office. My experience has been with them, that they have sold these backspace from them plus take a ground lease on the properties. So it 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 is on a separate parcel, but I think it unifies the direction of them planning, leaving the Guile Medical out and including the gas station. It makes that a perfect little island. And I recommend that we we kind of do that and have something that we can have to present for you for Friday. And see if that's a taste of what they'd like to see.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I don't want to belabor the point too much, but maybe I will. I originally was in 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 favor of including the Guile Building. The main reason was because it's already medical and was trying to deal with that spot zoning. But if we're now adding that gas station and the post office property, that probably covers us there. I think the other thing, Paul, Ted, you haven't spoken up. But I think when you, we were including the Guile Medical Building, it was also thought that the the setback requirements, pretty much what I was talking about, because it's next to residential property, just for the setbacks, and those would control the heights and everything, that it would actually be, while in the zone, impractical for it to change much different than what it is today. Is that true? Or am I all wet here?
I I think you're right. You know, you did, you have the same sort of setback requirements that you do on Route One, where you've got a, you've got a a setback to begin with, you know, twenty, thirty feet. And then you've got a step back of the building, so it could be twenty feet or so at the line, and then you have to step back from that. So I don't, I haven't calculated how tall it could be on that particular lot. But my guess is that you're going to be well within the interior of that lot before you get to any real height.
So so that was the original thought, that we were going to really let that change anyhow and handle the the spot zoning. But it it will raise emotional issues. It will raise the residential that a butt. So again, if we're trying to keep the conversation specific to the hospital, the hospital's needs, and hopefully encouraging that to be rebuilt, maybe that should be dropped. Although I did originally support that. Did I see a hint, Mr. Patsakowski?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I I, as I stated earlier, I thought we should include it. But I think that if we include the post office, like Mr. Poro said, we make that a, you know, you got Washington, Guile, and Hoyle Street, a carved-out island that for this town meeting, if both boards go to town meeting, you know, with that as our plan, I think we'd have a better opportunity to to pass it. And like like has been said, down the road, if something comes in front of us, we can always go back. Things will be, you know, things will shake out down the road. Let's go with that island. And that's, I'd agree to that, no problem.
All right, thank you.
One more question on another section of the bylaw?
Yes, Mr. Ja.
On on page two, Paul, nine point nine point four, number four C. What, why are we saying if we're going to allow standalone restaurants that they can't have alcohol sales? Why wouldn't we want to leave that up to the board of selectmen to determine if they should have a any type of alcohol license since we're going to allow restaurant?
I I would agree with your point, and and I don't think that it's it's the place of zoning to 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 get involved with those decisions that are left up to the board of selectmen. So we will, we'll delete that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we've had a great discussion, and I'm glad to see that we have a consensus. I think we now know what what we want to do with this. We'll change those boundaries and we'll finish up work on on this particular bylaw amendment and prepare to to get ready for town meeting.
Thank you. I also think that was a little cumbersome with so many of us, but at the end was a good overall discussion. I think you've heard a lot of input. The final decision is, as I said earlier, the planning board's an ultimately town meeting. But hopefully, we've been able to pass on some comments that are helpful and appreciate the opportunity to have this frank discussion and input. Anyone else? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I adjourn, selectman. I am going to take a prerogative, and we can vote on it technically next Tuesday if you wish. But Mr. Ja called something to my attention this evening regarding an article in town meeting. We had an article to accept chapter sixty-four G, section D. But we have to also include in that acceptance of section three A. Want, just doing three D is not going to have any effect or make any sense unless we do A. So we're going to include an article for that purpose because that was our intent to get that done. Certainly goes along with our intent. And if we need to formally vote it, it can be done at next Tuesday's meeting. But I just want to alert you that the warrant will change in that respect. If there's no strong objection, I'm going to move forward with that. Thank you. Now entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Marty. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.